Mr. Slowshower. Motion to come back. Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Rubin, all in favor? All right. Okay. We were in the middle of board comments. Mr. Slowshower, you should...
Good evening. I just have two quick comments. I know moving forward, and the superintendent can confirm this, I know we do have another public forum coming up to discuss the standards and the effect it has on our students in the district. I'm not sure what the timeframe is for that, but hopefully we'll get that scheduled before we get into the holiday season. It's not something I think we should wait on for next year, so hopefully we'll move ahead with that. My just quick second comment, just a little piggyback from comments made by trustee Lumia. I would welcome further discussion on PBIS to get a real understanding of its effect on all of the students in the district. So I hope at some point the board will be in agreement that we can have a board discussion with regards to PBIS and probably a little bit of restorative practices as well. Thank you.
I attended the Commissioners' Roundtable in Albany. Commissioner Eliot invited 25 board members from around the state. I'm not sure how we were selected, but we were lucky enough that... I was one of them, so Wapakus was represented, for a discussion on mental health issues. And it was quite productive. Everyone felt that there's a need for increased services, that we have increased numbers of children who are facing various issues and we need to do better at helping them. And the general feeling was also that many community agencies are also overwhelmed. And so the point was made that this really needs attention. And I also had the opportunity of pointing out that here in our own community, that the adolescent psych unit that used to be at St. Francis Hospital when it was St. Francis has been closed. And this made enough impression that three other people in the course of the discussion mentioned it and commented on it. So we kind of got heard, which was good. I also attended the Duchess County School Boards Association meeting with... together with Mrs. Laval and who was our representative, and Mr. Rubin, who was the Bosse's representative. And they ran a presentation on the resolutions that will be coming before the state convention at the end of this month in Buffalo. And all board members have been given copies of that and will have feedback, which will be posted on the website so you can see how people would like us to vote. And I will be following the board's instructions when I go and represent the board and the community. The... I also went with Mr. Lumia and Mr. Rubin to the energy session at Bosse's, which was quite informative. And the district has had made great savings. I noticed with our last energy performance, $197,000 in savings with our previous energy efforts. So we hope to continue finding ways that the district can continue to save money and put it to better uses than burning it up unnecessarily. I also was at the hearing on the transportation. It was an excellent opportunity to hear concerns of the district and for our district administration to explain exactly what will be done. And they're working very hard, and I'm very impressed. I'm sure you will be when you see what they're doing to reduce the time that students are waiting around on buses without being in the schools and making sure that our children are not waiting for buses in the dark. So that is something that we're looking forward to hearing their final report. And now I think we're... I also attended a number of committee meetings, and we're going to hear the committee reports because this is the business meeting. One meeting each month is a business meeting, and at that we have committee reports. And your board has been very busy, along with the district, on a number of committees. The first report with... I'm going to do them alphabetically so that... and we're going to ask the chair, or in the absence of the chair, another member of the committee, to report who attended and what was the... what the basic decisions or discussion was about briefly. Okay? First of all, the audit committee. Mr. Slowshower?
The audit... sorry, just... The audit committee recently met. We met with our internal auditor to review information and to move ahead with plans for internal audits. They'll be working on... they'll be working on to report back to the committee. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Capital Improvement Committee. Mr. Lumia?
As chairman of the Capital Improvement Committee, we have a meeting on the first Wednesday of each month. The project, the schematic designs, cost estimate are within budget. The $26 million project will be broken in two phases. Phase one, design scope, will be submitted to ACD by the middle of November. Phase two, design scope will be completed by the end of December and to ACD by the middle of January. As far as the Smart School Bontac, design has begun for the security vestibules. Door hardware upgrades are completed, except for Wapakus. John Daye dagouts are completed. The press box and concession stand at Roasty Ketchum has been approved by the state. And hopefully, the contract award recommendation will be approved at this meeting. Evans Roof is almost complete. There are two aspects which are too numerous. There are many aspects which were discussed which are too numerous. A complete summary of what was discussed in the last meeting can be found on the district webpage. Last, so far as the Capital Improvement Committee, the 2013 capital improvement project has been very successful on two fronts. Number one, our district is much better shaped at its completion. And because of the various improvements to the infrastructure, the district has realized a saving, not $194, but $569,139. The projected savings were supposed to be $494,201. Therefore, our actual savings increased by $74,938. Again, the actual saving because of the 2013 capital improvement projects has been $569,139. I'd like to thank the community for approving the 2013 capital project. And thanks for the diligent work of the architects, supervisor Bros, and our superintendent. They break down and actual savings can be seen on the district webpage. And I sincerely hope that all taxpayers go to the district webpage for the specifics on where the actual savings occurred. That's it for that committee.
Okay. Thank you. Next, in alphabetical order, Legislative Action Committee. Mr. Slowshower?
Thank you. The committee held its first meeting. Thankfully, we had a full committee. All members were present. We do have an item on the agenda to make a slight amendment, which we'll get into when we reach that particular agenda item. We have put together, I call it a rough, rough draft, of the LAP response that we wish to send to our local politicians. We have an upcoming meeting this Thursday. We should be able to fine tune that. It is our goal to have it ready for Monday night's board meeting. Worst case, we'll have it ready for the following board meeting. We did promise we would have it ready for November. We will need an additional board member to participate in that committee. So if any board members that are here tonight are willing to do that, please say so. If not, we can discuss that at a subsequent meeting. If we can just... when we reach the agenda item, you could please approve it. I think it's a very important, particular item as it does open up the doors to allow more senior students in each of the high schools to participate. We think it's very important to have the students involved in this particular committee. So I would just encourage all of you to please support that minor change to our charter so that we can move forward. Subsequently, we will be addressing other issues, such as unfunded mandates that we brought up, as well as gap elimination and some other items that we will make the board aware of as the year goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel Committee. Mr. Lumia?
As chairman of the Personnel Committee, we interviewed two individuals with a position at top bench, namely, a position for Director of Science, Med, Technology, and Business. Both individuals were brought forward to the superintendent. It's up to the superintendent to make a decision and bring it to the board.
And Policy Committee. In the absence of Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Lumia?
The policy... My God. The Policy Committee is working to complete the 4,000 series of the policy manual. We have requested a presentation to the board on a comprehensive K-12 guidance council program that we anticipate seeing in the next two weeks. We are providing... there were some questions about homework instruction. We have provided addition to our homework instruction policy this evening for a second read based on the feedback received and knowledge of past outcomes that should ensure student success. We are continuing discussion on the attendance policy, as well as homework policy, and we welcome any insight of these two policies. Any comments should be sent to Mrs. Pelton, and she will share it with the committee. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report, beginning with spotlight on... no. Okay. All right. We're going on superintendent's report. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. For the superintendent's report, we had... we were going to spotlight our students. We were making connections with global foundries. Due to the event that occurred, we didn't know how long we would be at executive session. So in the interest of getting our students home at a reasonable time, we will spotlight them next week if we're able to do so or double up in one of our next meetings. But in addition to that, I'd like to take this moment and I'm looking over first what I say every time. Hello, seniors sitting in the back. Remember, if you're of age... if you're of age, make sure you exercise your right to vote. In addition to that, this is your senior year. I know you're here for signatures. Making sure you do everything you have to, part of your requirement to graduate. And as I say at every Board of Education meeting, I expect you to have a great, great, unforgettable senior experience. But make sure you do it the right way. Be safe, have a good time, and don't forget about your academics. So good luck to you, and we look forward to the day you walk on stage so that you can receive that diploma. Thank you for being here. Also, the governor declared October Principal's Month. So before I... I'm not going to say much about the proclamation, but what I'd like to say is that I couldn't agree more. And everyone in the WCSD administration will tell you that our job as administrators, first and foremost, is to make sure that we provide all the support to those 15 individuals that are responsible on a daily basis to take care of their entire staff, their students, their parents, their custodian, and they get it from everybody. I know. I know. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and how much you do for our students. We see it every single day. So Lauren, sitting here, Bonnie King, along with Terrence Thompson and Dr. Steve Shucat, Dr. McNally, Mrs. Platt, Mr. Daly, Ms. Angelina Rooney, Ms. Bish, Mr. Dominic, Ms. Distefano, also with Mr. Syke, and Mr. Syke, another Mr. Syke, and I think I got everybody, and Mrs. Goldstein. So am I forgetting anyone? No, absolutely not. I got all 15. I did say Ms. Distefano. So what? And Mr. Gerson, our new principal at Gayhead. But this is a time to fill your buckets, so I'm filling your buckets and letting you know that you all rock and we really care about you tremendously. We thank you so much for the work you do. So I'm glad that there is a Principal's Month because you don't hear it enough how much you do and how much we honor you for the work that you do for our students. So thank you. Thank you again. I know we're not...
With that said, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Moving right along. Does anyone have anything he or she would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Eddie?
Mr. Rubin?
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated: 6.02 as amended, 6.03 as amended, 6.04, 6.05, 6.06, 6.07, 6.08, 6.09, 6.10, 6.11, 6.12, 6.13, and 6.14.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Galetta, all those in favor? You have it. 7.01. Approval of revised Legislative Action Committee Charter.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the resolved Legislative Action Committee Charter as amended.
All right. Do we have a motion? Mrs. Goodman, second. Mr. Slowshower, discussion. Mr. Rubin?
I think that this is a very important committee, and I think that anything that this committee... all the committees are important. But this is, of course, an important committee. And I would like to ask if Mr. Slowshower has no objections that this be put on hold for one week till our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll get our two other committee members who are not here now, let them weigh in on any thoughts they may have on this as well.
With all due respect, Mr. Rubin, I would ask that we not do that because we have a meeting coming up this Thursday. And unfortunately, because we had to make this change, the students were not present at our first meeting. And if we do decide to move ahead with the recommendation to the board with our draft letter, the students will not be present to participate at all in the discussion of this rebuttal letter for the LAP. So I understand your concern, but all we're really asking is to increase the number of students allowed to participate because we did have more than three students participate. And the committee felt that we did not want to exclude any student who was willing to step up and volunteer for this committee. Therefore, we decided to amend it to include up to six high school students with no more than two from each school. I do understand, not so much the concern, but wanting other board members who are not here to vote on this, but it would set this committee back. And one of the main goals of this committee was the involvement of the high school seniors.
Mrs. Goodman?
I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Slowshower. I was at that meeting. I think that... I think that if we don't approve this resolution right now, then before the next Legislative Action Committee meeting, that students lose a truly valuable opportunity to participate in their own school system, which was the whole idea behind having students anyway. I think we should be delighted that so many students wanted to be on the committee. And I think we should encourage it by allowing these students to take their seats as soon as we can.
Mr. Carrion?
Yeah, I tend not to interject when the board's having their dialogue, but I would agree with trustees Goodman and trustee Slowshower. I think that right now, the way we're working in the State Education Department and having students that want to be involved in the legislative committee, you lose momentum, and you don't want to lose momentum. And as I was giving the principals a shout-out, my heart goes out with APPR when I think about principal evaluation and teacher evaluation, when we think about the things that we're dealing with, Part 154 mandates, when we think about our tax levy, and so on and so forth. There are many things that are going on within the State Education Department that the conversation needs to continue. So there are a lot of things that need to be discussed and need to be talked about, and the legislative committee allows for that to occur, as well as the superintendent's forums that will be taking place so that we have that type of conversation where those students can also attend and gather information of what parents are saying and the community is saying regarding these matters.
Mr. Rubin?
Mr. Carrion, the final analysis, I'm going to refer to your judgment of this, but I have to answer your question, but I hope you'll be able to answer. Listening to you right now, do you think that what you're saying right now, the other board members, and I don't remember how they voted, but this board voted on each of the charters for each of the committees. So those board members coming into tonight's meeting would have expected that the charters for this committee would have been unchanged. Do you think that what you're saying outweighs that their potential thoughts on a revision to this charter? Because if you think it does, then I agree with you. You know, they, like I said, they voted for the charter, and now this is amended.
Well, I think more importantly, respectfully, is what the board members agree to. And I think that in... as a democracy, we have a quorum. So when... anything can happen where business has to continue, and you represent the entire board, whether it is five or all nine of you present. So politically, that's one response. But in addition to that, I would say yes.
Mr. Slowshower?
I would just like to say that the original charter was approved unanimously by this board. And with the change of adding three more high school seniors, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I'm going to say that the two board members that are not present tonight, I don't think we have an issue with this change.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure that they have an opportunity to have their voice heard. But I would go with the superintendent. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Lumia?
I think the superintendent's point is well taken. We have a quorum here. We should take a vote on the issue. It's closed.
Are there any other comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. 8.01. Designate a board member to serve on the Wellness Committee. Mr. Carrion just pointed out to me that since we now will have vacancies on several committees, perhaps we should table this and deal with it at the next meeting. Mr. Rubin? May I move to table? Mr. Lumia, seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. And please, if you will all consider which committees where there are now vacancies you might be interested in serving on. There's the Wellness Committee. There's the Audit Committee. A Community Relations Committee, Legislative Action Committee, and our representative to the Duchess County School Boards Association. So please be thinking where you would like to serve. Thank you. 8.02. NISBA proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions for the state convention. Do we start with discussion? And basically, this is to get... if anybody had a feeling about the different resolutions that you wish to discuss?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Carrion?
We will definitely put the results of how the members voted. We've got that with everything else. And that way, the public can see how each individual member is thinking regarding these resolutions that are going to be put up in this vote.
We're not going to be taking a vote on each and every one because, just like the board goals, it will be online, and you'll see all the results. And you can look it up on the web. It'll be there so you know how anybody did. This time is just going to be discussing any particular ones that people felt that they wanted to discuss. All right. Do you want me to go through them number by number? We gave math, so yeah, so we shouldn't... If you have one you would like to discuss, please let us know. The one and the number. And Mr. Rubin and I were at the presentation at the Duchess County School Boards Association, so we can... To what particular one was or was not recommended by the committee? We can fill you in on that. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Goodman?
Yeah. The proposed resolution number four, asking the state board to reconsider higher versus require higher score test preparation. We're dealing, I mean, statewide, and you will give the numbers. Carrion, or yourself, with our orange positions for some reason or another. Hard time making it to 65. And I think that asking them to go even higher just at the same time that you're pressuring students in schools to raise graduate rate. Let's raise the situation first, then let's see the rest of the board. But to both sides, talking about unfunded mandates is really a... So if we could oppose that, I would like...
So why, if you have voters that say, Madam President, intimated tally of those votes, so are you going to support that one? And vote against that? And then that I... Then we'll vote those votes and make sure that that's what the board represents.
I think the resolution was with the vote wants to raise rates. But we would agree with what...
That's a bit... I apologize.
I think most of the stuff that's trying to get every student to a cutter was, you know, it's really unreasonable. And different people have different skills and different talents. We really need to recognize that we're adequately helping every student. And my first... what I said at the time at the School Boards Association meeting was that when we give high school diploma and a student may be classified or have other qualities, we really tried all those students underway and everything that she was asked for. And they say, can't have a diploma even though you have all this. And they were putting students at the same level and they got a little job with someone who has dropped out. And I think that is not really fair because there are many jobs that do require all the skills and capacity within a region's diploma. But it could be for somebody who's, you know, who's well and charred and does the best he can and maybe unjust wish that. So my feeling is that, yes. Anyways, Mr. Rubin?
Well, I would pretty much support the NISBA decision time. So here is the... It's important that what we're talking about is that we want what we are trying to do, this but to represent to do, that this is not a... To impact a particular installation vote. We're talking about what we... This is what I already hear, that what we're talking about this...
Right. It's not being conditioned. Obviously, we don't state regulations all along, and neither does NISBA, but it would give that position they would put. And I have another issue I was concerned about. I asked Mrs. Wendell to give us some feedback. They had the one resolution as to the state legislature require that employees pay a certain percentage of benefits. And I have some questions about that because it seems this is a bargaining tool. And if we don't pay, if we put that and don't have a sense of flexibility, we just sell and other benefits. And it seems, and I was... If Mrs. Wendell could give us some input on that. She feels about what we should try to maintain flexibility on these issues. But of all...
Okay, there. Hear me now? Okay. With regard to statements you just made, these challenge to the legal act, mandating a minimum or maximum for health insurance contributions, will subvert the district's ability to have open negotiations with...
Thank you. And I have one other I was a little concerned about, which is John Falls, personal K. Although it would be good, we had a K education for everyone, I have some concern that it will be too academic. When we went full day in the garden, I was fully in support of it, because I felt it would give us both the academic items, also give time for children to block, take roles, dress up, water, plenty of amusement, all the other activities and play, and the states would be putting a very academic kindergarten, and the schools have been trying to find that, but I would, my idea would be the pre-education would be genuinely child development. Yes, we're running out of here. I hope I didn't cover too much. People want more time. Mrs. Goodman?
The one thing I want to say about the universal K is that actually the research on K is extraordinarily compelling, that it's not so much academic, it's they learn as the social skills that they learn, how to negotiate, how to, you know, delay vacation, things along those lines, resilience. For example, there's research on the original head start group in the early nineteen sixties, and it turned out that the head start students, twice as many of graduates from high school, one quarter of them wound up going to prison. So I think that twice as many as the local community that did not attend K, okay, whereas in the same, you know, get control of the kids from this age mission who did not attend pre-K versus head start, quarter of the head start kids to prison compared to the number of kids who went to prison from the non-head start group. So the reality is, three K now is ten dollars later, and the tremendous impact on law that we don't necessarily see. So I would have to say it actually universal K, so I would love to see this developed, if feasible, affordable, as something to look at in the future, rather than opposed to it because we're worried they might be changing the dynamic.
Well, as I said, I certainly support it, but I, you know, perhaps I will amend to it to say, yes, keep it as it is, kindergarten originally, meaning children's, the idea that young children develop events at different rates, and nurture and encourage them to then stay, you know, heavy together. And so would hope that the, we keep that in mind. Mr. Sosha, do we need to attend any time? Okay, I have, does anybody like to make a question? Do it this time? Okay, what is the next one? Mr. Sosha removed, the letters sent in, all those in favor. All right.
Just a quick, I mean, universal free, I mean, I want to make, if a kid were educated, and it's, 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 it's part of getting this, has the factor for many other things this district to consider, universal free, the cost of taxpayers paying for this, the money going to crump this, has this effect on local businesses, if you do it, kids in universal K, it is a legal business regards to, you know, school, after school, before school, have a negative impact, you know, if you think about the whole day garden, there's positives for that, there's negatives, that had a great impact on local businesses, businesses lost revenue because of those who are now not attending. So these are, you know, as a district, that's something to really think about, because those decisions also going to affect the whole economy and different things. All, on all four, providing these with as much education as possible, we have to consider all the factors, and while we're going to head and stuff like that. At the, you know, there was some discussion to get a gap admission, other things populated, eight different things, but at the meeting that you attend, was there any, just to get dialogue of what the thought process was behind, and how we fall to, you know, all the need to give us money that they owe, and it's not going to keep the purse string tight, where it is such a problem and things. Was there any question on that that evening?
I think it was you and us all, all board members feel open to be giving the money that we're getting. The only thing, a little discussion on, say, A is of course the issue of, right now, they...
Have you changed the formula?
Yeah.
I believe if you change the formula, it's not going to fit a school district, it's not going to fit with the whole.
There is issue that state has changed the form to a change in some relation in the last few years, which has been added to districts like ours that have declined, you know. So, you know, there's kind of a turn between this and the fact that we're hurt out, so we've got the answer was more able, so not so dependent on the local problem or having such a percent of the schools. Was your hand in the letter? Okay, Mr. Rubin.
I don't even know what that, by the district, the state owes us as much for eliminating the adjustment, but it was all, well, good luck trying to get a vote from us.
Are there any others? Then please, you send in your vote, so we can, and I'm exactly who wants to go. And I'll be asking next, also, if you can approve the total flexibility, a cement change, something that I just... Yeah, so we formed a vote last year, to assure that the year before, to make it that sometimes changes towards the sense of what we wanted, but, you know, sometimes things are meant to...
Okay, one point, throw one. Approval of a student on this.
Result that Board of Education has here approved, it's a freedom, student cards, according to Board House five two six zero, stated.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumi. Mr. Sosha, discussion. Mr. Rubin, perhaps you can explain since I came up with it.
I just thought that it was a wonderful opportunity, it's a freedom, there's been kind of the area, the last several years, it's worked through, through airplanes that have flown, and in that world, in that part, they give, they give out, you buy hides of the plane, so I thought this was a cool opportunity for the Department of Education to run on World War II, to be able to experience, albeit for a brief period of time, what the pilots were through when they flew on those planes, to marry a lot of the subjects that were teaching, in this case, they have to write a lot of words, writing, and they're not checking it up. So it matters, history, English, a bunch of things, but it would be a valuable opportunity for us to experience.
So, I know this idea is a good, and I support the spirit of the idea, a couple of things. First of all, I have a question about the contest in terms of insurance and clear, whether or not the freedom are even going to return to married next year for that. Also, who, who sets it up at the central school, who's awaiting, and things like that. I just have just a little turns with that, that's number one. Two, and probably a bigger order of reading, I think it's a role of the education to, to contest. I would personally feel more comfortable if the idea came from a teacher or a group of teachers, principal, and then did it to the board, had the idea, what need funding, and asked the board to be willing to sponsor, I think, I think it's a good idea, and so I know it can't be put in place, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just not eager of the board being in that role.
Mr. Rubin?
Mr. Rubin, are you concerned with the actual system here, that wins a freedom to either return to the area, it could either be word to air, or Dutchess County area, in terms of, of clear, you're also talking about, as part of the system here, that the students of the school, if they're clear, which of the school will be responsible for choosing their own winners, provided they met the criteria that we're talking about here, which is, and, so part of our concern, our address, and as well as insurance, well, the insurance field, the medical...
We went through, nice, there it is. The only thing I would, any ways, the only thing to say is that in terms of the competition, and collecting, that this is, given when there are many for Scotts that involve even staff members, but community members will participate in certain committee, I would that the treat it this way. Instead, it indicates here that having a selection, the winners selected, right?
Turn about schools.
Right, which suit the board. What do you think? I didn't give it much, what did I hear, Paul Gallop, that it indicated that, as, and now about it, I just, I'm not, I'm saying that, no, but I think that if this is something that the board is going to take on sponsor, as, say, that we create that committee to select the winner, we don't need...
That would be a burden, a burden for the teachers more.
What I'm saying is, you have a submission, a bunch of essays, we do it at high schools.
It, I don't know, this would be a full G, Mr. Rubin, but it seems, this is, as the letters raised, point, there, that you don't usually have a sponsor contest, and perhaps might be better before, you know, vote on, as, it's an exciting idea, but the expenditure of this, me at Board of Educations, but granted, because his eyes, it's a small amount, but it's not, if perhaps we refer this idea to the administration, to what would come in, to look into it, see if they, if it was, you know, be valid or useful.
I can suggest that I meet Mr. Rubin this week, and we just can, you, to really break it down with that, again, you and I, and just, because you put a lot of work into it, and it's a good idea, and I think sometimes, when you get your, um, take it, you, you get it, and then I still possibly go back for it.
Yes, Mrs. Goodman?
Well, I think able to give a great idea, it just seems to me that people invest a lot of time, and decide whether it's available or not, is to, the answer to be, one, and two, one, he said, I would just bring up a logistic issue, is if here in September, in the middle of the tour, when do you come in the contest?
This is, I will ask questions, please, if you have questions that you want to withdraw, we will do that this week, and make sure that we're set next week.
Okay, Mr. Sosha.
One, one quick, everyone with a trusty, is at the excellent point, so we all, I think it's something completely we can figure out to make this thing work, where it satisfies any board members. Quite frankly, the goal in my opinion of the school board, to enhance the education of students, and we call this a board suggestion for a contest, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. You know, maybe we come up with some things, or liberally with principals and other, in the schools, as well as Carrion and senior staff. I don't think because we're members, that should, that we should have some ideas as well. Very first, in different areas of our lives, we suggest we can come up with great things for the whole student. So I don't think because it's a board idea, or board member idea, is a, I just, we should put our heads together and figure out a way to work, and give these kids as many opportunities and as many different varieties as possible. I believe that's all completely, as the board of the district.
Thank you. All right, so I'll take out the questions. Mr. Rubin, second, Mr. Lumi, I think, you... Ten points, throw one. Second reading of files is two, one, two, zero, four, one, four, three, two, five, four, three, two, seven, four, three, three, four, four, one, four, five, two, six, four, five, two, six, point, one, four, five, three, one, four, five, three, two, four, seven, one, four, and four, seven, seven, three.
Result of the Board of Education, the Wharton Central School District, am I approved in second, second reading of, perhaps the Board passes, Mr. Park, first meeting of board, direct debate in the file committee, and take...
We have a motion. Mr. Rubin, second. Mrs. Goodman, discussion. Mr. Sosha.
I'll see, three, three, seven, we have received some additional instruct, and I know, so I was just curious, is, are these additions that were recommended for the board, do we need to vote, to Lumi, and do we need to vote these, or? Okay, so automatically, maybe about these policies, right? No, these were suggested, so, so when the committee did make that recommendation to the board...
Mr. Rubin?
As I was, then, emailed, any serious technical words that have with the R or E F, it's not anything that the board is making, we're just policies as state, not part for Arizona. That is there, supporting the recommendation by the administration, it's not, it's not board policy.
I just want to clarify that you, which, you know, basically, part of policy, although we just approved the policy based on recommendations and committee consent on that call. Thank you.
Mr. Sosha, your recommendation, totally, totally...
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
All those in favor? Unites. Ten point zero two, approval to higher policies.
Result of Board of Education of the Waltham Central District, hereby we carry the file policy effective October three, two thousand sixteen as.
Motion. Mr. Williams second, Mrs. Good, discussion. All those in favor? Unites. Eleven point zero one, members may request additional items, such as, or request for information. We have it. Twelve, zero, I found the, please let me time, like two minutes, at this, you may discuss any item related to school business. For three, I see.
Right. I'm a parent for free, I might really, I just want to, I guess, for, you have a board, like two versus three system, I want to thank you guys, board members, that you have just a tool, responsibility to the district, so to the moral responsibility to the parents. I being that one since that my kids rely on the district, they live for a, they're starting to, or growing, I have the advantage of my works to accomplish this and now you guys are trying to, to get it again, um, I would appreciate you as best as I can and think of details. I spent hours of time and determined that your thing, the bus schedule, seven minutes to answer the day of the kid, effects of the kids, does not for the child or the elementary school. So please, all this is safe. I have already made my change once, never, never doing it again. But parents, anyway, I did, that to all the diligence, we better, so that we all understand the gain of the district, not for his apparent, that was, of, right? That's, my wife, I want to be happy. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cullen, I'm a central resident and a third teacher in the central school. Um, beginning of this, I share my experience about the core exams are developed appropriately. And I used to be the opinionist online, being here as a classroom, I was needs to, but I, I would provide a little more than, than my opinion. So recently I got opportunity to meet with a physician of the, to discuss my concerns and these problems that occurred, any visions that are happening. And you asked me to formally evaluate the passages that were released by the state on the state EXA exam in two thousand and seventeen. Now, I think I'm not a, as you see, private, one passage was written in grade level, three passages around four, one somewhere before the fourth, then it's on the bridge, two passages on the fifth, one passage on this grid and a passage on seventh grid. Now, if trying to assess developmental proficiency, grade level efficiency, really only go to grade level above a child's current grade to see if they are to go beyond. Having half the capacity to leave two, four years above developmental grade, worst than appropriate in my opinion. What is right, I believe that I emailed each of you with the information that you got and you can look through of my notes, it's not just my, you can see what I've done. At the time of state, student attendance, like Dr. Mike, of the Hatchett School District, as well as board members from Boston State, and, and the, that's appropriate of the, and I'm working in your, in the future.
Is there anyone else who would like to be at the time? Okay. Seeing anyone, do we have a motion, Mr. Williams second, Mr. Ruben in favor? Unites.